And welcome back to another episode of Hawk Talk. We are doing another school board meeting summary, as well as a few updates and things that are coming down the pipe. I have here with me today, Principal Darren Siemens and Principal Dave Erickson. Thank you both for coming in and talking today and sharing some information.
Thank you, Mr. Jay.
Is this just a radio one or are we doing live video?
Oh, no, this is just a recording one, just as, just as usual. Oh, yeah. Yep, absolutely. Maybe one day.
So we dressed up for nothing then?
Yeah, sorry. No, this is, this isn't a video one. This is just audio. Maybe one time we'll do, we'll do a video one. Okay, so we're gonna kind of get going here. Just going over the school board meeting minutes, I'm gonna go all the way down to consideration of bills, January school board bills and December, December manual checks. That's the usual. Going through those basic things, making sure everything's going well.
Yeah, totally. I mean, it's just like I say, you know, and it's, and it's one of the things where the board is doing their due diligence. They're checking the financials. You know, there's a lot of different things coming in and out. There's always, there's always questions. I mean, why wouldn't there be, right? I mean, we're talking about money. So it's one of those opportunities for the board and that's, that's one of their major functions as a school board member is to be checking the financials. So there's, there's always some questions here and there, you know, as we go through the year, there's always things that we're fixing. So there'll be a, a check out there to a company that we're not used to maybe having a check go to. So it's just a good opportunity to explain some of those things and make sure everything's on the, on the level and whatnot. So.
Okay, so then that's really consideration of bills. Moving into the financial report, there was December financial report and December activities report. Anything to note from there?
No, there was nothing really jumping out that was alarming or anything like that. Again, you know, we're halfway through the year. Starting to, starting to start really planning for the 24, 25 school year and, you know, just watching, just watching the budget to see where we fall.
Okay, awesome. So then that really puts us already down into miscellaneous business. So let's start with the superintendent, secondary principal report. Let's, let's go into that real quick.
Some of the things I had in my report is of course, right now we have a committee working on the 24, 25 calendar. So that's, that's where we're building the monthly calendar, right? The days, the flex days, what days are we taking for professional development? What, how many days are we going to have off for, for different breaks, whether it's a holiday break, things like that? It's not the athletic or activity calendar. It's just our 24, 25 academic calendar. So we're looking at for February, that, that'll come before the board for approval for the 24, 25 year, and then we'll have that advertised. So families can start to plan accordingly. I think the last couple of years, we've, we've, as a district, I think we've done a better job of getting that out. And, and on my side of the building, there's still some of those vacations that take place right after Christmas break. I get it, you know, you're kind of, when you're gonna go on a big vacation, you're trying to get as, get the best rates as you can. But on my side, not to speak for Mr. Erickson, I've, I've seen less of that, which is kind of nice where it seems that parents and families are kind of planning around our calendar.
That's great.
So, yeah. So that's going on. Again, we're wrapping up the strategic planning. We're in the final phase of that to where the writing committee is, we are working on our strategic priorities. We've identified our priorities as, as being academic rigor. So we're gonna go back and we're, we're gonna make sure that we're challenging the kids in the way, places that we need to be challenging them. We're gonna make sure that's a true and viable curriculum, that it's a good transition between the grades and, and on the subjects. Another area we're looking at is school culture and engagement. And again, these are all K-12. And then the last area we're gonna be looking at is a safe and supportive environment for our students. So we have our writing teams working on the goals with that. We'll come back with rationales, build a calendar to where we collect data and review that data to see if we're on track to meet our goals for this next three to five years. So we have that. One of the other big things coming up, really the, the, the rather big things are some things we're doing with the community. So maybe I'll just transition into that if you want me to, Joel.
You bet, yep.
So February 8th, at 6:00 PM, we're gonna be doing a workforce development meeting. We've partnered with the Henninger Chamber of Commerce. They are sending out their yearly dues and kind of informational mailing. And we have put in a flyer where we are asking businesses, people associated with businesses to RSVP that you're coming to this by January 31st. This is an evening where we're bringing in a speaker. His name is Patrick Minor. He is the founder and CEO of Golden Path Solutions. That company works directly with North Dakota Career and Tech Education. So when our career guidance counselors, so in Henninger, Mrs. Olson, when we're working with our kids, trying to gather data over their junior high, high school years, what are their interests? What kind of careers align with those interests? All of it goes back to this Golden Path Solutions, right? We have this, we have this online platform. They're a part of it. So ultimately it's an opportunity for business people to come and decide if you want to be a part of that process.
Absolutely.
You know, do you, at the end of the day, when a kid takes this test and finds out that they're interested in jewelry?
Yep.
Or creating things, right? Maybe making jewelry or whatever. It will be an opportunity, you know, maybe, maybe one of our local businesses that does that, I don't know, will, will say, hey, I want to partner with that kid.
Yep, absolutely.
So this information would be uploaded into the, into that system. So when the kid is done and hits enter, it'll, it'll show all, like some local results of businesses that are, that would be willing to do job shadows, maybe internships in the hopes that down the road, it'll help sustain some of these businesses and provide ideas for maybe continued success. Maybe turnover, right? I mean, when it's time to maybe sell, maybe that kid will be the kid that you're selling to in 10, 15 years.
Absolutely.
So it's a way to get our kids' experiences now, and it's also a way to hopefully help the community of Henninger. So.
Yeah, it's just tying the, the, our, the possible, you know, youth workforce, future workforce with the current businesses that are, you know, keeping our town running currently right now.
You bet, you bet. And the, to have, have benefits now and hopefully have benefits that pay later. So that, that's again, that's on February 8th. We're looking at about an hour of your time that night. We'll have some snacks and some coffee and things like that to drink. You know, it's not to sit here and take a lot of your time, but to clue you in on, on where we're going. So you can think about if you want to be a part of that process. So that's, that's the workforce development. Again, the night of February 8th, and again, RSVP by calling the school 567-4501. In addition to that, we have our, the next day on the, on the 9th of February, we have our all-day in-service. That same gentleman, Mr. Minor, will be here for that. He's gonna talk with our staff about that process on a K-12 level. Cause it's, it does, it builds just like that. We're also gonna have our, our final conversation with Dr. Schatz over our strategic planning. And then Mr. Erickson's got a, a guy from, it's Mayville, Mayville.
Yeah, he's a doctor from Mayville, educational specialist. He's gonna talk about our EL students. He came about a month ago, and since we had an influx of EL students, non-English teaching or speaking students, he gave us some strategies and it was, it was very well received by the staff. And we were fortunate enough to get him to come back on February 9th for about a couple hours and share some more strategies with us in what we should be doing, maybe share some stories about what we're doing and how they're working, how they, how we could tweak those a little bit. Excellent resource, Dr., Dr. Dobbs from Dotson, excuse me, from Mayville State.
Awesome. And you know, being that we kind of already got Dave talking about some of that, that side, we're gonna transition into the elementary principal report. So Dave, I'm gonna let you keep taking it away and, and let us know what happened in there.
Okay, seems like a long time ago, but the math meet was held in Henninger last year. We had over 354 students. I've never seen so many tables and chairs set up in the big gym. This year it's in Bowman. That's on March 13th. That's grades four, five, six, seven, and eight. I'm pretty, pretty pumped about this. Our teachers have been doing practices three days a week since the beginning of October. So our goal is to go over and win that this year. So that'll be coming up again on March 13th. We did start a new program with our staff at Henninger. It's called Wellness Wednesdays. And we are looking at doing some different things with Healthy Blue. There are some benefits monetarily through Healthy Blue. But what we're looking at more is getting our staff a little bit healthier. Not that they're not healthy, but some healthy ideas, whether it's diet, exercise, and every Wednesday, we are doing that with our entire staff. So we call it Wellness Wednesdays and it's what about our third week of doing this now. So we've had a, had a really good turnout with that. We've had different individuals come down and talk to our paraprofessionals. That's been a goal of ours since Mr. Siemens and I sat down and looked at professional development ideas. We kind of found out where that gap was. And we have currently 12 paraprofessionals at our school. And we thought, okay, what are we doing for them? You know, we have all of the different types of classes and strategies for our contracted teachers. So we've incorporated different ones with our paraprofessionals. We have Deb Thurr, who is a educational specialist through NDSU, doing what we call conscious discipline. She'll be doing one more presentation on February 2nd. And then through RASP, which is our local, kind of our resource, if you will, consortium. On February 16th, Judy Bender will be coming down and doing another work strategy with ABCs of discipline with our paraprofessionals as well. We did another round of Stars testing on January 9th and 10th, talking to Ms. Swahovic and the teachers. They're very excited. We're looking at, there's two things that Stars tells you. Number one, it tells you the current area of where your students are. And then also on the flip side, it says, okay, what do we need to work on? So the thing I like about the Stars is now we can curtail some of our lesson plans and find out where those gaps are. You know, we talk about core curriculum. We talk about everything that we need to do. Back in my day, it was the three Rs. And I always ask, why is it an R? Because arithmetic doesn't start with an R. But anyway, that's why I'm a fire teacher. But I think the biggest thing when we look at, you know, the Stars, we used to do state testing. We'd get the results when the kids were in the next grade. Well, what good did that do us? We checked the box, right? So what Stars does, and the other thing, since we talked about EL students earlier, if we have an EL student that comes in, we can currently test where they're at now. And the nice thing is, is it goes into the Spanish spectrum. So it can read it in Spanish and things like that. So we like that with the Stars.
Well, and that does tie directly into where we're going with that academic rigor part of our strategic plan. So even though we're finishing our strategic plan, we've already started the, the base work to move forward with that. And that Stars program is, is very crucial to that.
Yeah, you know, and always, just like always, guys, we, we want buy-in, you know, and, and as administrators and IT guys, you, you have all these ideas. And until you get all 33 staff to say, hey, you know what? This is working.
Yeah.
And we're there. So, you know, that's the biggest thing, you know, we, we used to have different things where people would come in. I still remember mapping back in the day in 1998. We did all this mapping and we took all of our classes and we mapped out everything. And then it was gone. Well, that was a waste of time, you know? So these, these, these different things in Stars is one of them. We have a lot of buy-in and we're gonna see a benefit.
Absolutely. And I just kind of want to toot my own horn on that. So as not only a teacher, but even especially as a parent, being on both sides of that, I can't tell you how nice it is to look at those graphs, look at those charts and really truly understand whether what's going on with your kid or even just your student that may be struggling or who is doing really, really well. It just really clarifies that process. So on both sides, it's such a win. So parents who are listening, I manage strongly advocate to look at those.
And on that part though, you're, you're at the benefit because you've been trained as a, as an educator here, right? So there's a lot of parents that are gonna hear this and go, what's he talking about?
Absolutely.
What graphs? It's coming, it's coming. We're in year two of our Stars rollout. And it goes back to what Mr. Erickson was saying. We had to get the buy-on, buy-in in the building first. It's there, where that's where it is. So now we'll start to hold educational opportunities to explain what these graphs mean to parents. Cause you, as a parent, you'll have access to them. The biggest thing is, is that we needed to understand them first.
So we can answer questions?
Amen. Yep, yep.
Absolutely. But no, I just wanted a quick shout out. I mean, my goodness, just the little things that I've gotten as a parent or even seeing on the teacher's side, like both sides, just ecstatic about it. So those listening, keep your eye out for that. It's a wonderful thing.
Yeah, it, it's a big win. It's a program that is gonna continue on. The Spelling Bee will be held in Robert's Rink Auditorium on February 7th. This is grades five through eight. Mrs. Erickson and Mrs. Schneider are the facilitators. We take an afternoon. So the process goes where the individual teachers in those grades will give a pre-test. And then you have to score a certain, and let's tell you guys, those words were hard. You know, so what we do then is we pick so many kids from each class and we, then we take up all of the five, six, seventh and eighth, eighth year grade, excuse me, and they, they watch the Spelling Bee. And we kind of make it a big deal. Last year we did it, we streamed it. We had a lot of good response from that. So again, that'll be on February 7th.
Yeah, and that is a big deal. And I'm glad that we continue to do this. All too often, all we talk about is sports, 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 sports. You know, and we had, I had a conversation with Mrs. Erickson and one, and a group of her, her kids the other day. And it was the Spelling Bee. This is important stuff. And as a parent and as a community, we need to get on board and celebrate our kids academically as much as we do athletically.
Absolutely.
That's a very important thing here at Henninger Public School. It's a big part of our culture. You need to get on board the bus. This is just as important. And, and what we have sometimes is we have kids that will self-implode because they don't want to be labeled as the smart kid. Or they don't want to be labeled as the good speller, the good mathematician. And it's like, that's rubbish. That is absolutely rubbish. That's something to celebrate. That's something to be proud of, whether you're, you're talented in, in those areas, your music or whatever it is. And this school is gonna celebrate those things. We've been doing it. We've been starting it. Those teachers do a great job. At home though, you need to celebrate those things. You need to promote those things just as much as we promote the athletic ability of these kids. Cause ultimately, at the end of the day, what your brain is able to do and those talents are gonna get you further in life anyway.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, you know, and I think like Mr. Siemens says, I guess the main reason we are here is for school.
Yep, that's, that's the core.
And unfortunately, we, we think that sports kind of dictate our academic athletics.
Yeah, and you know, and it's tough. I get it. Like, I mean, it's, it's really engaging and exciting to watch, you know, like a close basketball game or a close football game. You can get really emotionally invested in, in those things. But you know, at, at the end of the day, those, those academics, you know, you don't get, the parents don't get to watch. They don't get to see that. They only see those, those results. So it's just one of those things where, you know, get a little bit more invested, ask some questions. And hopefully with this Star stuff, hopefully that's gonna help pave that road a little bit.
Well, and in the whole picture, and when I'm not trying to downplay athletics and sports and our activities we do, whether it's a club organization, every one of those opportunities has an important place in what we're trying to do at Henninger Public School. None is more important than, than the others. We want to make a well-rounded graduate by the time they get done here. So these kids have to be supported in everything that we're trying to get them to do, the same across the board, as much as we possibly can.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And then finally, every, like every meeting, I always give an update on the lunchroom. I gotta give a shout out to our gals, Kim, Tim, Kim Honeyman and Felicia Wizakowsky. We, we served 4,273 meals for December. Yeah, so 1,091 breakfast and 3182 for lunch. You know, you're not gonna please everybody. And I guess it, it's difficult when you look at the meals that you're providing. And I just held the door for our, our guy that was bringing our US Foods today, and he had 40 different cases. And I said, well, why, why so many today? And he says, well, Dave, you ordered these before, but they weren't available. So sometimes our schedule might change. Our menu might change. And then also if there's somebody that has gone that day, it might be a little bit quicker. But talking to other schools and administrators, I say, well, what about your serving size? Well, we do this. And I'm like, you're kidding me? I said, we do twice as much of that. Well, that's what we do. So when you look at those numbers, a kudos to those guys. You know, and, and the work that they put in. And one last thing, we got a great student teacher. Sydney Shower joined us on the 8th and she's in with Miss Anger in the fourth grade. And they just started a new program that in the future, we're gonna be doing some, some different things with, and it's pretty cool. They're in a reading contest and they had a Zoom with Malcolm Jink and Malcolm Butler, I believe his name was. And if you guys are Patriots fans, he was a, a Super Bowl champ. And he was, he was Skyping them and he was explaining the program. And currently we're standing 20th in the nation and number one in North Dakota for amount of books being read and minutes. And on Super Bowl Sunday, February 11th, I believe it is, at the Super Bowl, they will announce the winners. So when you're, when you're watching the Super Bowl, so we're excited about that. And I know, Mr. Jay, we had talked about possibly doing a little bit of story on that. But our current fourth graders, yeah, we talk about academics and reading. And my grandson even got up this, the other morning and instead of going on Fortnite or whatever it is, he was reading a book. And I thought, oh my goodness. So kudos to Miss Anger and Mrs. Shower, doing some great things, as all of our teachers are. And when we start looking at, you know, that's just one program that just recently came up. But the different things that we're doing, you know, we got great teachers, we got great staff and we got great kids. So.
That's awesome. Well, it sounds like that kind of concludes the elementary principal report. Thank you so much, Dave.
Yeah, later on we'll talk about a resignation and then we'll chime in a little bit more. We want to talk a little bit about that.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Okay, so then moving forward, we have the athletic director report and then the building committee.
You bet. I'll go over Mr. Kohler's report here real quick. You know, boys' basketball, they're about halfway done their, done with their season. Districts are gonna be held in Bowman. So again, be looking for that. And then regionals will be up at Bismarck St. Mary's. Currently we're the eighth seed in the boys' basketball. We wish them luck. And as we get into tournament time, that's of course the time to be playing your best ball. Girls' basketball, again, they got about a month left in their regular season. Districts for the girls are gonna be up in Glen Allen. So we're gonna be traveling, both boys and girls. The regionals for the girls are gonna be up in Kildare and they're currently the seven seeds. We wish them the best of luck as they wind down their season as well. Today, the boys wrestling, the girls, boys wrestling, they're on their way to, I think, Morcroft today. But again, the same old story. I mean, they're, they're, we're looking at, you know, the last quarter of the season for them as well. Regional duels will be in Beulah. And then the individual regional tournament is gonna be up in Kildare this year. And of course, state's always in Fargo, it seems anymore. I don't know why they don't, anyway, Bismarck would be a nice place someday. But anyway, so again, we wish, we wish the boys and girls wrestling teams great luck on that as well. You know, of course, we're starting to look at some spring sports with baseball and track and field. And then some other things, of course, is tomorrow, our pep band is gonna be playing up at Dickinson State University.
Really? Wow.
Yeah, it's pretty exciting, miss. They were, I believe that this is kind of a, a reschedule from a football game. They were, they were gonna go up and help play for a, with the Dickinson State band for a football game. I don't remember whether it got bad or what it was, but.
If I remember right, it was kind of a slushy cold and they were worried about some of the instruments and, you know, so that, yeah, they were gonna do one of the last football games.
Yeah, so they'll be playing to that tomorrow. And I do believe Dickinson State, it's girls and boys games. I think they're both playing. So it'll be kind of, it'll be fun to be up there and watch that. And of course, we got the old Nighthawk, Samos will be playing up there. So we'll, the, the, the pep band will be able to watch her as well. So again, that's tomorrow. And then of course, band and choir, their regional dates are coming up in March and April as well, with their state competition in May. So, you know, definitely starting to transition out of those winter sports into the spring things.
Awesome, fantastic. So that wraps up the athletic director report and then committee reports.
Yeah, just the building committee. We're, we're finalizing financial reports on that $3.3 million bond that, that helped build the pool or rebuild the pool, I should say, where we put in new windows, replace the boilers and things like that. Long story short, you know, cause I'm, I'm looking at this, we could have had like an hour long, maybe we were already close to an hour long. I don't know.
About 30 minutes or so.
Long, long story short on this thing, what we found out is, is going back into that when this bond was created, there were some construction fees that were not accounted for. That, and, and I guess, you know, hindsight's 2020, but lesson learned. Next time we do something like this, I think there'll be a lot of people asking questions. It's like, is this the whole bill? Is this the whole financial bill? So that's kind of the short story of that.
Okay, so then moving on to, there's nothing for unfinished business. That really leaves us with the last section, which is new business. So first thing we have on here, kind of a bit of a sad note, but resignation of Don Boxerud.
You bet. I'm, I'm gonna say something here quick, but then I'm gonna let Mr. Burwick, or Mr. Burke, Mr. Erickson, sorry. The Boxerud, Burke, Erickson. I'm gonna let Mr. Erickson kind of go a little bit deeper because he's had a long time of working with Mrs. Boxerud. But as, as our superintendent, it is, this is bittersweet. I'm excited for Don. She's earned to go off into retirement, go off into the sunset, sunset, so to speak, educationally. And she's doing it at the top of her game. And she is one of the best professional teachers I've ever seen. We will be holding a retirement gig for her later in the year. She's earned it. I wish her the best. But I'm gonna let Mr. Erickson touch a little bit more because he, he said some, some really heartfelt things I felt the other night at the meeting. So.
Yeah, you know, when you start talking about 36 years and, and I'm right behind her at 35. So you know, you know what's coming for this guy. But anyway, what I shared is there's, there's professionalism and then there's respect. She has both. You know, when you start talking about in the classroom, there's so many dynamics with discipline, with organization, with creativity, with just doing your job. You've never had to worry about Mrs. Boxerud doing that. And, and she goes above and beyond. I'm here shortly after seven. She's always here before me. She does, she's getting all of her stuff done. And it's a good chance for me, and I've, I've taken this, this chance a lot of times to stop in and say, hey, you know, I'm thinking of this. What do you think of that idea? And the thing I like is she's a straight shooter. It's not gonna work. Okay, so what, what would you do? Okay, now, and I do that with a lot of teachers. But I think that when you start talking about, you don't hear a lot of, I, I've never heard a bad thing about Mrs. Boxerud. We get phone calls and different questions and things like that. And, but, but she, with her experience, has learned that if you stay ahead of the problem and you do the communication with the parents up front and things like that. We go into meetings and she, she takes the meeting under control. She, she has valid points for each kid. It doesn't matter what type of kid they are. So what I really liked was a couple of years ago, we were looking for somebody to do summer school, extended learning. And I went into her and, and did my pitch and things like that. And of course, so even in the summer, you know, when you go in there and they're on task, who wants to be at summer school, right? So, you know, she did a couple of different things creatively. But I guess the biggest thing that I, it's a big loss for us. It really is. But like Mr. Siemens says, she's put in her time. She's hardly ever sick. You can count on her. She'll cover for other teachers and, and man, that's, that's a, that's a diamond in the rough. So I have a lot of respect for Mrs. Boxerud and parents and her peers. That's the biggest thing. Mr. Jay, when you start looking at, when you ask peers, there's a, cause no matter what job you're in, profession, not everybody's gonna like you, right? And I had a wise person tell me once, if you're doing your job right, a lot of people aren't gonna like you. Right? So it depends upon the area you're at. But yeah, she's a big one. And of course, I, right away, well, you'll come in and sub. And she just kind of looked at, and I knew the answer, but give me a while. Let me settle in. And, and I think that she'll be the one that when she does come back in and whether it's sub or whatever, you know, we'll be able to count on her. So. But yeah, that's a good one. And, and we wish her well in her retirement. And there will be something for her. I know she's not a big, you know, a social person, but there will be some things.
Oh, yeah. Awesome. Okay. Well then, let's kind of finish up with our, our last two items here. We have petition of recognition of appropriate negotiating unit.
So, yeah, so and then after that one is, is.
The recognition.
Representative organization. So the two go together. So what we're doing, last year we did negotiations for teacher contracts, things like that. During that timeframe, everybody wanted to take a look at Appendix B. Appendix B has some of the salaries that go along with concessions and FBLA and ban, like the pep band and student councils, things of that nature, FFA, right? Some of that kind of stuff. So we're opening up those negotiations because it was agreed upon to do that last year. Where we're gonna, we're, we're just, so this was the formality to get that whole process started. So there'll be meetings between the student or the teachers and their, and their negotiation people that they pick, representatives, and then the two negotiators from the school board moving forward to try to, try to, you know, take a look at Appendix B, make some changes for the good, and then have that in place as we move forward.
It's one of those things, Mr. Jay, that when you talk about Appendix P and, and all the others, it's a time for revaluation. You know, so when you start looking at, you know, let's look at your current area with the stream team and the HPS upload and things like that and technology, and then we go into science. So those things have all evolved, right? Some have changed. There's more responsibilities than others. And it's a good chance to kind of reevaluate those and then kind of set a standard. And the other thing, then it helps Mr. Siemens in the recruitment of younger teachers or, or new teachers, if you will, and say, hey, there's an opportunity here. But that opportunity probably has to have a little bite to it, right? And, and say, hey, this is gonna be a lot of work, but this is what you'll get for that, you know? And of course, when we're young and inexperienced, we're, we'll do just about anything, right? But that's, that's where, that's where that. But that's, that's where, that's where that is. Now, the bad thing is sometimes then people start to get a little bit itchy and they, they get that territorial. Well, I do more than this and this and this. That's why it's good to have this open contact, this open communication. And then kind of sell what you do and then make it monetarily accordingly.
Gotcha. Just to reevaluate those things and just keep everybody.
Absolutely. Yep. Hopefully, I mean, my, my biggest, one of my biggest goals out of this process is, and this is just from my years of, of being at Henninger. Is there needs to be some district description of what these things are. There, there is nothing, you know? So if I go to somebody and say, hey, I want you to be the whatever, whatever advisor.
Yep.
Junior High Student Council, FBLA, whatever. There is no job description. There's nothing that even talks about, what do I got to do?
Yep.
And a lot of times what happens is you get compared to whoever did it before you. And, and what's, what's been good for Henninger is we've had some pretty good advisors in those situations. That have gone above and beyond and just really dove into it and done great things. That kind of sets a hard precedence to follow.
Absolutely.
And, and especially if there was nothing left that was like, hey, this is what you do this time of the year. This is what you do this time of the year.
You're walking in blind.
You are walking in blind. So you have this expectation from the community for that program to continue on like it was. But there's, there's no, there's, there's no guidance.
Yep. So creating those guidelines and stuff like that can help the stability of everything.
Yes, exactly. It helps the district for the long run. So you're not depending on the individual, you're depending on the plan.
Okay. All right. So that's what those two areas we're going to talk about. I want to thank you guys for coming in and, and doing a Hawk Talk today about, you know, updates and school board meeting and all that stuff. So thank you very much. Our next regular school board meeting is going to be on February 21st. And then last but not least, I want to thank you for tuning into Hawk Talk. Thanks for listening to Hawk Talk. You can listen to us anywhere on Apple Podcasts, Spotify Podcasts, YouTube. And have a great day.